Okay, I think we'll get underway everybody with our meeting tonight. Uh, what are we at? We're at September 15th, 2020. Deputy Mayor Headley could be here tonight. Uh, we talked to the powers that be and as long as we social distance, we didn't have to wear masks. So that's what we're doing. So get underway. So everybody's had a chance to approve, uh, to review the agenda. If they're comfortable with it, can I get a motion to approve it? Moved by Council Plano, seconded by Council Chaff. Be resolved that the Council of Town Nipewa approved the regular meeting agenda for September 15th, 2020. All in favor? Carry it. And in the last minutes meeting, if there was no error in our emissions and everybody's comfortable with that, we move forward with the motion for that. Moved by Council Drard, seconded by Council Dodo. Be resolved that the Council of Town Nipewa approved the minutes of the regular meeting held September 1st, 2020 as circulated. All in favor? Carry it. So I think I need to wait a few minutes.
Well, you could go into further detail if you feel like.
Okay, we've got a couple of public hearings to go forward on, but we're gonna need to wait about five minutes here. So maybe we'll just stay with our agenda for a minute. So does anybody have any council reports that they would like to bring forward? Council Parrot.
Okay, uh, so what's the big idea? It won't be happening this year, um, COVID reasons. Sure, we'll get running again next year. Um, the beautiful place to meet and kind of clinic laudaries running again. And if you come to the town office, um, there are forms to fill out so that you can fill the forms out and, um, write your check or put your credit card number in. The tickets will get to you. There are tickets that are a hundred dollars each with 2020 ticket or 50/50 tickets that are $20 each, or you can buy a pack of three for $250 tickets. And you can buy a pack of five 50/50s for $50. So a few good deals and, uh, I guess you can get ahold of myself, Marilyn Clark, Robert Scott, Arnie Suskey, Marilyn Clark, John Nelson. Who else is around the table here? There's a whole bunch of committee members, Terrell Pockeys. My home is in a couple, Ray Grayson, Malcolm Murray. So there's lots of people you can get tickets from and they'll be selling them over the radio soon. And just on the COVID side of things, we, in the White Mud District, which is what we are a part of, we are currently just with three active and it's a good indication that the, the caution and care that people are using is paying off.
Okay, thank you very much. I know Marilyn is really disappointed that she couldn't do a big idea this time. I've talked to her a couple of times and I know that she was torn and she kept hoping to win, but she had to make a decision and the decision was because of our social distancing and all the other rules that came along with it, that it's just something we had to postpone. But you're right, I'm sure it'll be back bigger and better the next year. So. Uh, any other questions or comments on what we already talked about?
I guess I can show you this, Chairman. Ready for a close-up of this, not me? Abby?
Yeah.
Okay, anybody else got a council report? At Council Plano.
I'm pleased to submit another storefront improvement incentive application for resolution tonight. Promote Time is looking to update their entrance with new signage, lighting, and exterior details. The cost of the program is $2,300. In 2020, the total funds committed to the program is $23,225, leveraging over $110,000 in improvements. There will also be two junk clinics at the trail park this Saturday at 10:00 a.m. and 4:30 p.m. Cost is $50 for a three-hour training. Space is limited. Please call Marilyn at 476-7607 for registration information.
Thank you. Any questions, any comments? Okay, anybody else with any council reports? Council Drard.
Uh, what I've got here is a report, just kind of a follow-up to the summary of the mask project that just occurred within the community.
Okay.
So that obviously just occurred, um, and that they were distributed on September the 3rd. Those packages were assembled by Touchwood in Touchwood Park. They're supported by individual staff. Uh, placed stickers on each bed and stuffed them each with a box of 50 disposable face masks and six information inserts. It was also a great time for the community to get out a lot of information.
Yeah.
Uh, some things like our COVID QA, uh, the mental health, uh, numbers. Emergency notification, uh, system info and sign up form. That's probably the kicker, the one I would like to point out that did go in that. Uh, through the past number of years, the town has been working with Code Red and we are working to, towards a new, uh, emergency notification system. So we are going to require residents to sign up for this new program. Now, the success of the program and how well it reaches the community is 100% based on the community members themselves to ensure that they do register for this. We can't get that information out fast enough. Um, I mean, all too often we think there's other tools like social media and whatnot, but that leaves glaring holes in how that reaches our community. Um, there's so many people that don't use that as a form of communication and sometimes we need to get that information out to residents in an emergency and it has to happen right away. So we ask that you follow through on that and we'll be giving lots of reminders to ensure that you do get signed up for this. Um, as well, there's also a postcard there from High Life, uh, the town website, and then a small reminder of our project sponsors. The, the whole timeframe of the project was actually amazing. It only took about a week really from start to finish from, uh, I guess genesis of the idea to, to face masks delivered to every doorstep in Nipewa. So it was on Thursday, September 3rd, they were delivered. Uh, Touchwood, Touchwood Park delivered to all areas south of Highway 16, Broadway Avenue and South Division residents, the north end of the town, uh, west of town, Trailer Park, West Creek, all residents along Highway 16 and then the Hillcrest Development. Our town summer students delivered to all areas west of Mountain Avenue, all areas east of Mountain Avenue and all miscellaneous, uh, residences that are the outliers. And then of course, our very own Jamie and Jody delivered to all apartment buildings in town, all residents in the Long Mountain Avenue, homes, apartments, above businesses. Um, all said, being told that it took just over eight hours to get the community covered, which is, uh, speaks well to our community being able to be safe and responsible um, as we're going through, I guess stricter time right now in our, our COVID protocols in, in Perry Mountain. So the idea of going out in a mask, it's quite easy to do now because we know every home's had a box booked. So let's all do our part and participate with that. Um, yeah, and, uh, I think that's about it. So.
Okay, so a quick question. If you, if you already are signed up for Code Red, do you automatically go over to that?
No, sorry.
We're asking everybody to re-sign up. We're gonna try to aim for it, but depending how they originally signed up for Code Red, they may not get over it. So it's we can do that.
And going back to the eight hours there, I went calling and Jody floated that idea they could do it one day. I said, "Good luck."
If you doubt it, if you don't learn anything yet, uh, you're not catching it. Dare them, they can't and they totally will.
I just was gonna ask, like, for the Code Red registration, did you have some of the people looking and let them know right now where they go to do this?
On our website, if they go to nipewa.ca, there is a icon, uh, emergency communication. Just click that. It'll take two seconds to sign up.
In that package Gerald was referring to, with the half of the page thing, we've actually had a lot of them starting to turn about in the office and it's been quite the response.
It's been very promising and I know we'll be communicating that at length and repeatedly to try to get those numbers up. I mean, it would really be nice to see that at least one, one phone in every household was contacted that number. That way, you know, whether it be a natural disaster or whether it be, you know, uh, you know, uh, an industrial accident, something, right? You know, that we can get that information out in a hurry.
So I just wanted to add though, it's Code Red was very successful for us for, for the months we actually had to use it so far. Uh, the difference being it is a US company. Uh, we're changing to a service where we already have the all-mess system used for our council meetings and whatnot. So we're just gonna, uh, take on that extra component through the all-mess system and we'll have better control over it. It's a Canadian company. Actually, we work with people in Manitoba and we'll have better control over our data, easier access to changing addresses and clients and.
It'll be a local number that the emergency call will come from.
Yeah, so we do want to suggest Miami's Code Red was non-infectious. It was, it was very good. We just see the advantages of moving to a system that is a little more like all together.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else on that part? Anybody else got any council reports? Okay, good. We will move back into our public hearing. So, um, I guess I will need a motion to move forward into the first public hearing. The call to order moved by. Council Parrot, seconded by Council Drard. Be resolved, the Council of Town Nipewa do not open this public hearing to hear representation variation application V02-2020 of Shiva Maharaj. Uh, Jeff, you're gonna talk to us about this?
I'm your building inspector. Yep, so this is application V02-2020-N, owner and applicant is Shiva Maharaj. The proposals as a variation vary to allow the height of a fence in the rear yard to be increased from six feet to eight feet within the CH commercial highway zone. It's affecting, uh, Lot 2, Plan 5695, specifically being 137 Main Street West. And reason to support, the owner wishes to store tow recovery and impound vehicles in a compound which requires an eight-foot high fence. So our zoning bylaws allows maximum height of fence to be six feet. So the request is to increase that height. Um, I have provided a couple of pictures and just to breathe forwardly of it. The fence or the compound will be consistently right directed to the rear of the existing building. Um, it's as well within any setbacks. Part of it will be newly constructed and part of it modified to increase to the size that, that was provided in the map rate. So.
Okay, and you had no, you said you had no?
I had a couple of queries, uh, just, just seeking of greater information of it and I have no, no concerns I had before or anything. So.
Does anybody have any questions? Yes, Council Parrot.
So two questions. Is it a zone? Is it permissible for them to store vehicles in that area, uh, in our bylaws?
Yes, it would be incidental to the use as a, as existing, uh, dealership. So.
Um, so this isn't going to end up being a long-term parts supply parking type place? It's just a compound for impounded vehicles which would have a turnaround time of maybe 30 days as opposed to sitting there for years?
Uh, to my knowledge, tract, uh, I, I don't know exactly how long they are to be there, but the, the storage of, like, as a wrecking establishment, is a different, it's a different entity versus just the, the.
So that, that would be a concern of mine that it doesn't become a storage area for, you know, long-term storage for vehicles and then they end up being parked out or, or whatever. Like, you know, being inside the town boundaries, that would be an issue. Are they enlarging the actual footprint of the fence in there yet?
Uh, very minor, it's very minor. Actually, I think the applicant is here.
Yeah, she, did you want to come up with the picture of that?
Maybe have a little more further information for that.
Well, I could just tell us who you are.
Shiva Maharaj. And, um, we have a wrecking establishment in Wellwood, so we wouldn't really have wrecked vehicles there. The turnaround time though is not 30 days. Um, depending on how many DUIs you get, it could be up to 90 days.
But so a year?
Not a year, no. And we probably only gonna have 30 vehicles there, so it's not laid out to have any number of vehicles. Like, if we have 30 and we get one more, then we have no place to put it. So 130 after, you know? So there wouldn't be vehicles there for years and years and years or a year even. The plan is DWI's, they normally, while sometimes without people, they have to get it out in 30 days, but depending on where their period go with, might be 35 days, the same thing if you get, I think your second DUI is 60 days and your third DUI is 90 days. So it all depends, 90-ish days can, you know?
Great, thank you. Any other questions, guys?
Do you own the property adjacent, next door?
No.
Okay.
We have Neil, which direction?
Uh, either side.
No. Um, one side is Neil with Nipewa Tire and the back and the side is the same neighbor, but it's a commercial property go around. So I don't really know the neighbor.
Okay. Both, both the neighbors were the individuals that contacted me and were the ones who were questioning and, uh, providing the information here and they, they saw no concerns with the proposals.
I fully agree. We see no concerns.
No, no objection.
No objections.
Yeah, no objections. Correct.
The eight-foot fence is a requirement though of that? It is a requirement? Okay.
Federal CMP.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Because depending on who got the DUI, they would wanna jump the fence and jump and start and drive it along.
Makes sense. I think in construction hasn't started on this yet.
No. No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
That's it? Thank you.
Okay, and there's anybody else with any questions, concerns, and comments?
Is it gonna be a wood fence or a chain link, did you say?
Um.
Maybe. Wood to the back and chain link to the front. There is a six-foot fence there right now and it's in panels. So what we plan on doing is raising the panel two feet and wood on the bottom to make up the eight feet. So it'd be the wooden fence on the bottom and the panel just lifted. And there's one place that there's no fence right now, but the fence kinda go like this, like this, like this, and down. And we just wanna square it off.
Okay, perfect. Thank you. Anything else? Okay, I guess we'll move forward. Let's close in this public hearing and move by. Council Plano, seconded by Council Dodo. Be resolved, the Council of Town Nipewa do not adjourn this public hearing at 7:16 p.m. All in favor? Carry it. Okay, we're gonna move into the second public hearing. So again, I will need a motion to move forward on that. Moved by Council Drard, seconded by Council Plano. Be resolved, the Council of Town Nipewa do not open this public hearing to hear representation variation application V-03-2020 of Jeff Bay on behalf of Charlie Galactio. All in favor? Carry it. Okay, Jeff, you're up.
This is application V-03-2020-N. Owner is Charlie Galactio. Applicant Jeff Bay. Proposal is a variation vary to allow the height of a fence and then for the north side yard separating 415 Fifth Avenue and 409 Fifth Avenue to be increased from six feet to eight feet within the RS residential single zone. The area affecting is lots 25 and 26, Block 8, Plan 222, being 415 Fifth Avenue. And reason to support is to make the newly constructed fence comply and to provide added privacy between owners. Uh, so yeah, yeah, this is about our fence height, um, maximum height of six feet. Uh, it's been added or it's been redone to, to increase it to eight feet. Uh, this fence is only on the, uh, boundary line between the two properties. It is, it is not completely around the yard. And, uh, applicants here, if you, if you would like to know more information, but.
Hi. Hi, I'm, uh, Jeff Bay. We're on, uh, 409 Fifth. So the fence is on, uh, 415, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so Charlie is, um, my wife's uncle, Uncle Charlie. So he had an old fence back there and it was, uh, rotting and he was gonna cut it down and make a little short red fence. So. My wife and I, we're, um, on our house, on the south side of our house, we have a door that comes off and a small deck at this time, which is two feet off the ground. And me being a big guy, that's kinda, I got a picture. You wanna pass picture around?
Sure.
Okay, so this is a fancy question here and I'm standing on the deck and we plan on bringing the deck out to the edge of the building. So if it was only six feet, I'd be like looking over at Uncle Charlie, you know?
Okay.
And, um, I just said to my wife, you know, let's help Uncle Charlie out. Let's build the fence for him. Um, he'll get a nice fence. He's happy. He can afford it. And, um, well, we gained a little bit of extra property because otherwise if we built the fence on our side, then we're gonna lose five feet.
Correct.
So and then we're gonna have this big open space that is totally useless.
Okay.
So I said, "Well, let's help Uncle Charlie and he'll be happy and we'll be happy." So that's kinda how it went. And he was on holiday, so he was due tonight, tomorrow. So we just said, "Okay, we'll go buy the lumber." And, um, I really didn't think any problem would be with it because it's not affecting anybody, right? And on the other side of our property, we got an eight-foot hedge, so from the other neighbor. So it just kinda got built and we didn't ever think there would be a complaint. So, but obviously somebody phoned.
Okay, good. But in that actual situation, I mean, Uncle Charlie's not complaining.
No, he wasn't.
So, I mean, we're big there.
I, I've received no, no concerns from the, uh, from the circulation, no communication at all. So.
Okay, great, perfect. Okay, well, thank you. Okay. Yeah, no Council Plano, I'm here to drive by tonight to learn about it and, yeah. Find me some.
Yeah, I think, I think I made it specific to that one boundary just so that for future reference, uh, you know, property owners change hands or anything that it doesn't, this would be specific to that boundary, not the entire yard. Um.
Yeah, yeah, we're not gonna.
That's right.
Take it anymore. So.
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. Any other questions, any other comments? Okay, we'll close this public hearing. Move by. Council Plano, seconded by Council Chaff. Be resolved, the Council of Town Nipewa do not adjourn this public hearing at 7:20 p.m. All in favor? Carry it. Okay, we will go back to our regular meeting. Um, correspondence. So, oh, we're into department reports.
Denise? Did you just send us sort of a paper saying the proof or?
Yeah, I'll let you know.
All right, okay, thanks. Good night, guys.
No, thank you.
Yeah, I'll thank you guys.
Okay, I'm at your operations, Denise.
All right, uh, work is ongoing on CN site. Staff have started to de-water and sort on residential portion. Last week Smith completed the drill shot to tie into the manhole on, uh, Fifth and Bryan. Uh, so that was the main starting point for us to start the sanitary sewer on the CN site. So staff will be ongoing there, uh, for the next couple of weeks. With that, we've also lost all of our subdivision. So I'll say there's, there's a couple of strikers, but I expected more to be hanging up with COVID and we, university has kinda changed their format. We clearly did, like, lose most of them. So we do have posting up for more skilled, our seasonal labor. Sure, ended up by four to six weeks. So if anyone else is looking, we are hiring, uh, probably three, four applicants. We'll see how that works. So it's closed in all departments.
Well, you're in that area, Denise. Did you talk about the streets? How that's kind of like, what's gonna, what's gonna happen there? Like, what's gonna stay open? What's gonna close? What's going on?
Uh, with the streets right now, um, Bryan is back open. We had closed that over the drill shot. Um, right now we can kinda see the new Mill Street that's kinda got a weird bend in it now. It'd be disconfusing everybody. But, uh, once we complete Howden Avenue, which is the north-south one in front of the apartment building.
Yes.
So once we have that one completed, we'll likely click the switch and close off Mill Street, Pool Street, whatever you kinda know it by. And then it'll do a curb in front of the fire hall and tie into New Road.
And that's the one that's gonna be, have Gil on the other side?
It would, yes, that's correct.
Gil Street will be on the other side of that and that's where it'll come up?
Yeah, so we'll put some barriers up and we'll get people adjusted to this and we'll probably rip up some little portions to just remove some of the confusion. Um, once the signage is up, everything else will make a little bit more sense, but, uh, with staff and residents that bear with us, we flipped the switch there so it's be. So that'll be happening in the upcoming weeks. Uh, with how it's progressing, we're nice. Stone House is already completed. Um, the new work of Mill Street is, uh, completely will probably address that a little more as traffic runs on it. We'll just have to be cautious with the, the infrastructure because manhole frames and stormtrooper frames, stuff like that, that is sitting slightly higher than that because, because we don't have these and obviously, so those we plan to be next year.
And then it's just likely the other side, the decision's been made not to close Crocus Street right away, right?
No, we'll leave it in the interim. We'll do all the residential constructions, the logistics, stuff run safely. Um, and then once people adjust to the new street format and we'll likely then have to close Crocus. But we'll see how things progress this year and move along with it. Crocus will be closed at some point.
Okay, and that's a Department of Highway's decision, right?
Yes, that is part of our subdivision requirement. So we will also dig up the Pool Street intersection on Highway 5. It's because we'll be using that new intersection. So we'll have to remove that as part of our condition as well.
Correct.
So, um, yeah, we're still seeing inventory being delivered. There's still parts coming in for all the projects. Those are ongoing. Uh, we'll continue with, except working on that. Uh, Cemetery saw some light work happen there. We did, uh, the first section at the north end. Um, and again, once we have more seasonal staff back on our team here, we'll start working on that project again with some site leveling, site beautification. Um, speaking of beautification portion, we have tree deliveries scheduled for tomorrow. That'll be our third delivery of trees actually. We already had two smaller deliveries and, uh, a lot of delivery coming from Jeff's near series. So that'll be, uh, Cemetery, residential boulevards, parks replacement, um, stuff, people have ones for the bike park that, with smaller stuff, but a good portion of this will be for actually town boulevards. That was a few phone calls we received was, uh, why did you cut my tree down on my boulevard? Um, the, so the Dutch Elm program was very tardy this year in marking our diseased trees.
Correct.
And we literally cut the trees with the paint still left on them. So we were on their tails the whole way cutting trees down before residents even knew they had a diseased tree in their front lawn and it was removed. They don't really. So we will be, uh, as time allows, cleaning up the stuff branding we have, so still piles of sawdust and some hole soap. Staff will attend to that.
Any idea how many trees you've cut down?
I don't even have the file list at all. Like, they, we were literally cutting it as the paint was wetting the tree.
Okay, okay.
I think the second it came from there, being filled. Um, but likewise, like, we will be aggressively planning the boulevards this year. Uh, we have several gaps in our boulevards now and we definitely want to remedy that. So we'll be working on that. Uh, Lagoon, I have a lot of your length reports, so bear with me. Lagoon, um, like you said, I mentioned that last week that, our last meeting, we, uh, were waiting testing. So the E cell has passed its test results. Uh, the West cell, we're still waiting on the, the proper test for, for ability on that. Uh, hopefully those will be another week or two because there's only so many test spots in the lab. We have to unfortunately wait. So in the interim, um, contractors are working on the riprap portion. So work is ongoing at Lagoon Cells. We are also going to start filling the East cell. Um, so we can hydraulically load it so that that is the next portion ready for the aeration tubes to be going in there. So work is still ongoing. It's still moving ahead and it's been busy though. So again, for those that are going onto the bike park, watch out. We have trucks running quite a few, uh, samples of rock out there. of rock out there right now. I think some of you may have noticed the new giant pile of rock that's kind of in the intersection there. So that's all the riprap material for water control erosion on the inside, on the interior of the cells. Flood restoration is ongoing, so we've been working around times in those zones that we had some, some damage with a temporary burn, or permanent burns were built. We again leveled those off, there were some settlements, and we've topped some of those, sculpted them. We'll get those high received in the coming weeks. We'll do a dormant fall sew on that, so that will bring some spring growth there. And we'll continue with that. So I think they're completing the south end of town, we'll be working on around soccer fields on that burn on the street this coming week here. Summer staff, that's done. We did one sering of dust depressant. So with the new work done on Park Lake Road, we got the extra gravel there and semi-traffic. We kinda pushed that out and made a little dusty, so we sprayed that. At the end of the day, we also sprayed the railway street because of all the sanding going down there and bike park traffic, just to make sure the residents aren't getting some of the much dust there. We also have two tender or quote requests out right now. One for riprap around our temporary culvert crossing on Park Lake Road and one for winter sand. So we'll wait until the end of this week and then I'll terminate for the riprap. And then sanding, like, we can give a little bit of time on that for submissions yet. So then we'll have some results for next meeting, we'll be announcing that as well. And then Bike Park, I had the pleasure of going there on Sunday with Alex Mann, who was the, with our trail design group. And we put a posting out and we had a huge overwhelming group from the Pinoy Group come out to assist us with some trail maintenance. So Alex performed a little thing for us and showed us how to properly maintain our trails. So we spent a couple hours maintaining and building and fixing little potholes, manholes, stuff like that that had formed. So big thank you to the Pinoy Group, they definitely came out and they're very eager to volunteer for some other stuff, so. They include it in that. So that's everything, but any questions?
I always have to ask, how's my asphalt recycling machine doing that we have ordered and was broken and now it's coming back?
It's basically damaged progressively. I do have the bars now that finally came in, so I'll check with staff to see how soon we can get that operational. I'm very excited to see that work as myself, because I have hit a number of potholes and checking streets and aggravating just as much as you, so I hope I'll listen to people work on.
Yeah, and we did discuss it, you think it's still appropriate this time of the year to still be able to do it, right?
Yes, it's a thermal infrared heater, so it essentially heats the whole zone. So as long as we can dry it out and suck out the water and then give it a torch it and evaporate, we should get some decent bonding.
It's gonna crack out in this break again and?
If it does, we just reheat it, melt it again and patch it again. So that's the benefit of this program is that.
Okay, I'm hopeful.
It rejuvenates, yeah, hopefully, so, yeah, I'm hopeful. But I'm also very excited to try it out.
Anybody else? Do we have any other existing street projects that are ongoing besides some pothole repair that?
I was supposed to have crack seal done. I had to follow up with that contractor, see if they're still on their way, what happened with them? But they were scheduled, so that's the only big outstanding one right now. Micro seal was kind of put on hold just because we took that money to help us with flood mitigation efforts, because we still don't know, they've announced money, but that doesn't mean it's happening this year. So if you still have to carry that expense, it can be carried into twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Doesn't mean we give a check tomorrow on that. So I have to apologize and you can scold me for that one, that I held back on that one. It was a big ticket, I didn't really cover a lot of that flood expense we had.
No, just wanted to make sure that that's communicated to the public, that it's not a thing where council isn't supportive of street repair. It's that those dollars were gobbled up as a result of the Canada Day event.
Yeah, we need to do some smaller street repairs. I'm waiting on a few quotes still for some other ones, but if the weather holds and we have a great fall, we could still see some more work happen. If it turns on us, then we'll just have to pull that one over to next year and double down.
Okay.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, thank you, Eddie. Okay, Colleen, RCMP statistic over for it.
Well, it's just the regular August, unless there's some questions, I can forward back to Mark. It's just asks.
Okay, we will move on to finance, the designate new tax sale date.
So just very quickly, earlier in the year, you designate 2019 as the year for which you would sell properties for the taxes. That would mean anything that would be outstanding from basically 2018 and older. Through COVID, it was required by the province of Manitoba that we suspend any action on tax sale activities or at least the end of September, or I think actually it was the twenty-second of September. So with that coming up and going to not be extended any further, we have a resolution on the books here now to actually name a new tax sale date to put that tax sale process back into circulation, whereby we have to meet certain imposed deadlines. So all this means is we're setting a new tax sale date if the province determines that because of COVID that they would still like us to suspend, we'll just suspend it. But we need to set a timeframe and get a process in place now to move forward. So I'm just asking you, push the date to March now so we can hold this year's tax sale.
Okay, no, it makes sense, it's a fair-minded decision. Anybody have any comments, any questions? Okay, so we'll move forward with that resolution then, move by. Councilman Debo. Second by Councilor Costas. Whereas, due to the financial impacts of COVID nineteen may have on ratepayers, the province of Manitoba directed municipalities to temporarily suspend work on the tax sale process until September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty. And whereas, once the temporary suspension is over, the Town of Nipewa will be unable to meet the legislative timelines in order to continue with the tax sales slated for November third, two thousand and twenty. Therefore, be it resolved that we now set March third, two thousand and twenty-one at two PM for the holding of the tax sale for the two thousand and nineteen tax sale proceedings. All in favor? Okay, we're into the July financial statement. Everybody's had a chance to review that, if there's no questions or concerns, we'll move forward with that motion. Move by, Councilor Debo. Second by, Councilor Pado. Be it resolved that we approve the financial statement for the month ending July thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. All in favor? Karen. Okay, we're into the new business. So our first one is our first public hearing, the very application for Maraja. Did we have any concerns, did we have any more questions about it? Are we all comfortable with moving forward with that? Okay, we will move forward with the, with the motion, moved by Councilor Parrot. Second by, Councilor Costas. Be it resolved, we approve variation application B dash O two dash two O two O of Shiva Maraja to vary the height of the fence in their yard of block two, plan five six nine five of one thirty-nine Main Street West from six feet to eight feet within the CH commercial highway zone to accommodate vehicles towed, stored, and pounded or recovered by RCMP and MPI. All in favor? Karen. And our second public hearing, the Jeff Bay Glacier, Charlie. Everybody was comfortable with that one?
I actually have some concerns with that. Just not so much that the fact that there's a fence built, is that because it doesn't corrupt, it doesn't follow code and because us as the council will not have an opportunity to discuss whether we want to give variation to that. So that is my concern on the overall project. So yeah, probably will record that, that's my concern.
Yeah, and I don't disagree with you, I mean, Council fellow, I would look at it, and I think when we saw it, we just applied the fact that, you know, everything's not black and white, there's gray areas, right? And we thought in this particular case, you know, it's coming down the middle. It's not like it's a back lane or anything like that, it's just going to protect his deck. And I understand what you're saying, Councilor, but I think we were comfortable with that decision, absolutely. I think we'll probably move forward with that then and get the vote accordingly. So move by, Councilor Costas. Seconded by, Councilor Pado.
Be it resolved, we approve variation application B dash O three dash two O two O of Jeff Bay on behalf of Charlie Glacier to vary the height of a fence in the north side yard of block twenty-five and twenty-six, block A, plan two two two, separating four one five Fifth Avenue and four oh nine Fifth Avenue from a height of six feet to eight feet within the RRS residential single unit zone to bring the newly constructed fence into compliance. All in favor? Opposed? Karen. Okay. Storefront improvement incentive program, okay? Councilor Pado spoke to that. Do we have any questions, any concerns to look at? Okay, we'll move forward with that resolution. Move by, Councilor Pado. Seconded by, Councilor Debo. Be it resolved that we approve the application of the storefront improvement program submitted by promo time for exterior renovations, including new signage and lighting, incentive provided at fifty percent up to an approved amount of two thousand five hundred and seventy-six dollars. All in favor? Karen. Okay, we're back into supplemental taxes for two thousand and twenty, Colleen.
So this is just manual thing, if so happens, we do have anything that is removed here. So as you know, we have to, you know, grow. So we have the opportunity to provide those either full year additions or partial year additions. They can go back a year or two to move us from the list that we have there. So these would be things that they weren't able to include on their preliminary final assessment till before the year would close out. So you have a net value there, additions and additions of nine thousand one and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
Any questions, any comments? I'm assuming it won't have to be every single one of them? Okay, good. Okay, we'll move forward with that motion. Move by, Councilor Costas. Seconded by, Councilor Debo. Be it resolved, in accordance with section two two six of the municipal act, Councilor Hillby approved the following supplemental additions and additions to the two thousand and twenty tax rule as received from the assessment branch in the amount of those.
Nine thousand four hundred and ninety-nine dollars and ninety-six cents.
Okay, all in favor? Karen. Okay, we're into fire prevention week. Who gets there? Talk about the proclamation, are you calling it, me, this is me?
So this is just proclamation, although normally fire prevention week, there can be activities happening through your community and whatnot. With COVID, it's very difficult to have any activities or promote any specific item. It was a decision that we have a proclamation done, because we have to be sitting as councilmen in advance for that particular week. And I believe we're going to sponsor each day of that particular week, a different thing where you, you know, take a look at, you know, planning for this April year, when everything, and I'm not sure which every day will be, but. Keep an eye on the Facebook link and our webpage for this information, it's very valuable.
Okay, well, we'll move forward on this motion, unless everybody has any comments or any questions. Okay, move by, Councilor Pado. Seconded by, Councilor Debo. I'm gonna rival you on your list on this one, me. It's a very long resolution. Whereas, Towne, Nipewa was committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting in Nipewa. And whereas, fires is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, in homes of the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, two out of every five homes start fire in the kitchen, with thirty-one percent of those fires resulting from unattended cooking. And whereas, more than half the reported non-fatal home cooking fire injuries occurred when the victims tried to fight the fire themselves. And whereas, children under the age of five face a higher risk of non-fire burns associated with cooking than being burned in a cooking fire. And whereas, Nipewa residents should stay in the kitchen when frying food on the stove top, keep a three-foot kid-free zone around cooking areas, and keep anything that can catch fire away from the stove tops. And whereas, residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half. And whereas, Nipewa's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas, Nipewa residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the two thousand and twenty Fire Prevention Week theme, serve up fire safely in the kitchen, effectively serves to remind us to stay alert and to use caution when cooking to reduce the risk of kitchen fires. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Blake McCutcheon, Mayor of the Town of Nipewa and the Council of the Town of Nipewa, do hereby proclaim October fourth to ten, two thousand and twenty, as Fire Prevention Week, and I urge all residents of Nipewa to check their kitchens for fire hazards and use safe cooking practices and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of the Nipewa Fire and Emergency Services. All in favor?
You're ready, yeah.
Sorry, can't hear you. Okay, we are on to, Councilor Murray Parrott wants to be Vice President of our Management of Museums. It's pretty exciting, do you have any comments on that, Murray, or?
Well, it's a good, good association and really works for the municipalities and for the people in Manitoba. And I feel like I do an excellent job representing the province, and I do have lots of time.
Okay, and of course, Vice President, it's only one step away from being your President, right?
It's a big step.
Okay, so you've been on, you've been on?
Oh, yeah, I've been on AMN for a few years now and as a district rep for the Western District. And I've seen the importance of maintaining open communication channels with all the different levels of government and keeping the provincial municipalities working together as a team. And because we all have similar problems, but our problems are very unique to our own municipality in its own way. And as a group, we can make a lot of positive changes.
And I think the government manager actually does take an interest in what AMN manages.
They have a very good leadership with, between the two.
Yep, so when's that going to happen?
Is that in November, at the AMN convention?
Okay, and you have any idea how many people are running for Vice President?
No.
No.
Okay.
Just that our current can life, he's the Vice President, he is running for President as Ralph Brining is stepping down at the end of this term.
Okay, Margaret.
Anybody have any concerns about Murray running for Vice President?
I'd like to just say, they're doing an excellent job as a director, representing not only Nipewa, but our whole region. And, you know, I'd be honored to be the one to, to be able to push the motion forward.
Okay, perfect.
Okay, well, with that, then we'll move forward, moved by Councilor Debo. And seconded by, Councilor Costas. Be it resolved that the Council of Towne, Nipewa, do hereby nominate Councilor Murray Parrott to the position of Vice President for the upcoming two thousand and twenty Executive Committee election Association of Manitoba Municipalities. All in favor? Karen, ready to announce? Okay, I think we are coming to the end of our meeting. I wanted to talk a little bit about Park Lake, but is there anybody else that wants to have anything else they want to talk about before we get to that? Okay, I just thought maybe summer's coming to an end, and of course, July first was when we lost our Park Lake. And obviously, over the last two months, there's been a lot of conversation in the community about what's going to happen and whether it's going to be fixed, or whether it's going to be replaced, or whether it's going to stay like it is. And I thought maybe, Colleen, you could just bring us up to date on what we've heard from the government so far and from engineers and stuff like that.
So maybe I'll go back just a little bit, I guess, of July first. I think we'd be very isolated in Nipewa such that the information that was getting out that it was severe hardships occurring in the rivers and rapid city in the hills. I think the way things were handled here and the fact that what was occurring is a disaster in Nipewa, not being specific to where traffic was traveling through as per se, it wasn't maybe as noticeable what we were experiencing here in Nipewa. Because the little conversations I had after July first with women, whether it was, you know, newspapers or the radio stations or, or whatever that called, didn't really understand what occurred in Nipewa. So for example, the first set of mayor engineers came out, they called and said, we understand a little bit of water left Park Lake, and I said, no, it's empty. And we get someone, someone either the phone. They show up, first thing we get out of the truck and Janie happened to be there, and I think you were there as well. Oh, you really meant empty, and I said, yeah, I think empty means empty anyway. And I said, yeah, I think empty means empty, but anyway. So I think all of a sudden Niboa started to understand what we were experiencing here. And then more recently, we passed a resolution, the Council did, to start lobbying on behalf of what should occur perhaps in the watershed from an overall perspective when you have made but even a drop of water coming at the other end of the watershed right now in Niboa and beyond and heading further east, that's fairly significant. So we since had engineers that began, we've actually toured, we walked the basin of the lake here more recently last week. From what we've been told, obviously, there is going to be a disaster program. We'll be getting more information in the, by email or mail in the coming weeks. So they kind of did, and what they did is they kind of speced out a value of what they felt needed to happen or what the costing might be. And it's just a projection, that's all it is, is a pre-estimate, a pre-inspection report. We looked at all of the sites around Niboa, and if you include the Gulf Course, I think they actually made 13 sites, 13 holes out there that need some attention. So Niboa in totality would have probably 25 sites now roughly, the way we were looking at it. So specific to Park Lake, the site included the weir, it included the where the burn reached on the one point, and then the burn we had to build basically to East of Walker Avenue. They told us as well that probably looking at the fact that Park Lake was there for, since the late 1800s, we would never be able probably to put the burn back in the corner the way it was just using earth. We would have to bring it to modern day standards. He did not say whether it'd be mechanical or structural or whatever, but just as our natural operations mentioned, you know, just even if it did go back to some kind of material deposits, but they have to be framed in certain ways and likenesses similar to what a lagoon spell would have to be done. A lot of pressure came over that area. I don't know what they mean to alleviate that pressure, what that means to possibly dredging some of what came in with shale and gravel deposits through the water that came through there. We don't know those answers. We basically, when we get asked here at the office, what's it going to cost? What is it need to be done? We don't have a clue. I'm by far not an engineer and I don't imagine rest of yous have any ideas. Denise would be our closest one to be able to tell us what he thinks might have to happen there. It's going to be a long discussion. I think the lobbying has started to help. They're starting to get a bigger picture of what really did occur in Niboa. Others also know the importance of what Park Lake brought for serving as a retention pond for water, the water coming from the upper watershed. I'm going to guess that the people to the east of us, whether it's through our, your glass zone or as far as Portage, are going to understand that if nothing is done here, and at this stage where we don't know that, there has to be some kind of control device to put in place where there be a lake or something different to defend for everybody else to the east. It's going to be a lengthy process. So I guess we'll wait until the report is going to come from Stantec, who is operating on behalf of the University of Michigan Organization to provide those preliminary inspections and give us that information, and then we'll have to take a look at it and decide what is the further slide to the south of Park Lake important to us? What's the value? What's the opportunities there? Could it be restructured? Could we repurpose things? What, what is the commitment to put it back the way it is? But I can see, just looking very closely into the near future, the funding is not there in our budget. It's very limited. We have to look at it from a bigger perspective, I think, and understand the value from all aspects, not just from the money coin view, but where is this put as 20 years away? Where is it supposed to be?
Yeah, like I said, when, when I talk to people in the community, I mean, they have, there's lots of ideas out there. And some people are talking about it just as a wetland, right? Maybe we'll just turn it back in for the geese and the ducks and for the bird sanctuary and things like that. Other people are really pushing for it to be a rec area, right? Where we could put canoes on it and kayaks and maybe throw some fish in there. And I'm not sure that's possible. I've asked me about that. And maybe you could just quickly talk about how that water works in that? If we could ever get it rebuilt to a lake, how that water flows or doesn't flow?
Yeah, as Bill mentioned, there's so many questions that we have that we just don't have the answers for yet. Would I love to see a lake again? Of course I would. Will it, will it happen next year? No, I think the public needs to brace that this could be three to five years in realistic timeframe. It'll take some council lobbying, some community lobbying. It'll definitely allow the voice, will eventually get heard here.
Could it be a freshwater lake? Not a freshwater, but a lake that's moving that wouldn't be LGI in it? It could be a lake that could be?
I think if we deepen it up a little bit there and just clean out some of the sediment, some of the silt, all that stuff, and in getting the cross agents of those Department of Fisheries and Ocean, we have to see what's permissible in our end. So like I said, there's 100 questions that we have, but we just don't even have answers to them yet. Like, do we want to build upstream weir structures to capture silt as it comes in? So we can avoid heavy silting the lake later on every time it's a spring flood? So we'd least be similar to a shale trap. But yeah, my initial gut is it will have to have any form of a structure to release water, whether it would be a giant weir structure of logs, whether it be a substantially sized pipe with valves so that if flood situation came in, we could release water in a hurry, do a managed flood of our park system and downstream, but very well managed. At least that way we can let them go. And then you have that retention time again to help communicate water flow through. So it's always calculated risk of determining what's the best route. That's why I'm saying it's not just a matter of throw some rocks and some dirt there and coat it in. Unfortunately, the problem and solution are much bigger.
Right. All right. Maranka, Councilor Pudlo, we were talking before the meeting and you said you had lots of people come up to you and say that they want the lake back, right? Isn't that what you've heard in general?
Yeah, a lot of people say, you know, what are you doing in Park Lake? We'd like to see it be a lake again. I've had a few say, leave it like it is, let a river, you know, let the river run through, make it a green space, put it into a park. I think maybe what's, people don't understand is it's not, it's not that easy. There's a lot, a lot more decision that has to be made, and it's not necessarily in our hands. Like they all say, what are you doing as a town? You know, fill the lake back up. Well, it's not really that easy. There's so many other avenues you have to go through environmentally and engineering, the whole thing. So, you know, it's good to clarify, it's not like next year we're going to have a lake. It's, it's a long time and it's a lot of process that's, we all have to work together. I don't mind the community feedback. I like to hear everyone's ideas. It's just that it's not going to happen overnight and we don't have the answers.
Yeah, and I think that's?
We just don't have them.
I think we need to start getting that, that it is going to be a lengthy process, right? It's not going to be one year or two years. It could be at least a three to five minutes.
I would call it a win if we could clean out some of the sediment this winter when it's frozen.
Okay.
And that to me would be a huge win of start a project, but if we don't get it this winter, we may have to wait next year for it to freeze up, I think, because that would be happening in that during a frozen period.
That would come out a lot of issue, right?
That's where the lobbying comes in and see if, what portion of funding will be allocated there.
Yeah, it's all at a cost too.
Yeah. There's a, there's a, I haven't even said the servers out there, we go and draw it and get a topographic idea of how much volume of material has to be removed out of there. Because then we have to find a place to dispose of that.
Right. You said it is valid, not valid, but it's?
We would likely get some nutrient testing done on it to see what is in it, to see if it's a viable product to put up some, some farm land that needs those nutrients. And, but again, we're stuck to spring and fall, right? Those fields are growing in the middle there, so we can't really spread it in the growing season, so.
Councilor Parrott, you always have an opinion. What are you thinking?
Well, it was a too great a risk for safety to fill it in at the time of flood. The decision was made to not fill it in. We've already sent out letters to the different levels of government indicating that this is a good water reserve to protect the downstream municipalities. And I talked with Camp Light from Portage, who's with AMN, and he was quite interested in receiving the information, realizing that the White Moon River goes through his municipalities. With so many of our streams feeding into it for, as a flood issue for Niboa currently, it's okay the way it is, although it could slow a bit of flooding down that river event perhaps. But as a flood issue for Niboa, we would need the downstream municipalities to lobby for us to get provincial and federal funding to break it up. As a recreational entity, it is a draw. And the one thing that the residents will probably notice this year is that they can sleep at night right now because the geese aren't there. But as was mentioned, you know, previously by Councilor Gerard, that this is a residential recreational issue for the town as well. So it would be nice if we could fill in the gap.
Right.
And it'd be nice if we could fill in the valve.
Yeah, I like that idea.
And it would be nice if we could convince the government that that's all we need to do and then it could be done easily.
I know. And that could be a challenge. Councilor Pudlo, since Park Lake, some of it ended up in your basement, what's your opinion?
No, it's, it's, the community loves Park Lake. And I know it has so much value to our community. Bird Sanctuary has lots of people that like to go out that area. The fall, the springtime, when we see all of the birds. I'm a person that enjoys the noise of the birds out there, just seeing them all out there. It's just such a great area to go take a walk or out and see. But I know in order to be able to restore it back to the way it was, it's going to have to be done properly. But I know regulations have certainly changed over the past hundred years. And in order for, for those walls to be rebuilt, it's going to take a lot of time, a lot of planning, and unfortunately, probably a lot of money.
Which are right, I think if it wasn't there, our entire town would just change dramatically, right? If it wasn't there, yeah. Councilor Dodo, what do you think?
Maybe residents purchase property around there, just have access to that also.
Right.
You know, I'm the type of guy, I like to get things done pretty quickly. So to hear that it takes so long, it's something you learn. And I think it's something you have to expect, a large project like this. And we've seen it with other projects in town where they take a little while, but in the end it's worth it. So I think talking with my fellow councilors here, we're all in favor of some sort of restoration of Park Lake in some form. Definitely to make it better than what it was, there's some different options we have depending on how much we want to put into it. And I'm definitely curious on what type of support we can get from other outside agents and whether it's the province or. But, you know, just last week, there was an announcement from the provincial government for the new sportway live. They got enough money put into an account to have an endowment fund where they get, you know, four to 600,000 a year interest made from their money. So it's going to help fund that. So if we can somehow look to, to the future to build something that could be self-sufficient after really take the burden off of Niboa in the long term.
Councilor Gerard, you want to bring it home?
Yeah. You know, Park Lake is one of those things, you know, what's interesting when people look at Niboa, there's a vast majority of the population surrounding this area that didn't even know a Park Lake existed.
Yeah.
And it's interesting that July 1st, that little 40-acre pocket became a very topical area for, area for the whole region. And, you know, when you take an area that basically is almost at the head of the White Moon River and Gracie Sony Creek, I mean, it's at a critical place where it enters the watershed. And, you know, someone who interacts with our agriculture producers every day, who continue to make climate improvements and things like that, you know, in terms of water management, I think this is one of those areas where this will contribute to water management within our watershed. Myself, I've spent countless years as a supporter of a duck supplement. And I see conservation of, of water places like this. I don't see it as that if there's not a communal on it, if there's not a, you know, hold on it or something like that, that it's, it's got zero value. It has a huge amount of value, but we see what it can do to help keep fossil, phosphate loads out of Lake Manitoba. We see, you know, it's interesting this summer, you know, after that bay, how quiet it's become around that, it's now a dead region and it is quite sad. Like, you know, it used to be you go out there and you see the red and black birds. Kids went and they saw the turtles. That's gone. And it's, it's like a big scar at the southern end of our community now. I know there's countless people that are reaching out to me, trying to contact people, whoever they can, to reach out to whatever organization they can to get engaged in that. And I think we'll do, we would do our community a great disservice if we don't get them involved sooner rather than later in the restoration of our property. And whether it be an advocacy group, you know, those who might be able to lend expertise or, or contacts to whom can help in our lobbying effort. I mean, let, let's face it, us as a council, week in, week out, we're making to look really good by our, our administrative staff. They do so much work in the background. Is this another project that we can just dump solely at their feet? Because when we talk lobbying, let's be honest, it's not us who's in there day in, day out lobbying, we're asking our administrative staff. While in the process, we're also asking our administrative staff to, you know, where's our, you know, where's your heater for the pavement to, you know? And the, the list of projects is many on them. And so I think the sooner we can broaden our reach and get our community involved, I think would be a huge benefit. I, I don't want to rest the panelizing water back in that, in, in, back in Park Lake. I know it's not going to be easy. I know I'm prepared to push that rope to get, get up that hill and whatever we have to do to put water back there and, and restore that area of our community. I think it's just too important. Can I put a dollar sign what the value is to the town? I can't. I mean, it'd be nice to put just a, it'd be nice to look at debits and credits and that's solely what it is. That's not what put it there. That's not what's done a lot of things that many people are agreeing. So I think we've got to get involved sooner rather than later on that.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, it's fairly obvious, we all agree that Park Lake is something of value to our town. We very much would like to put it back into place, but obviously, we've also been told that it's going to take months, years of time, and we don't know numbers yet, right? We don't know how much money. So, I mean, I think it's just good that we can, you know, tell the community that, you know, we are engaged and are, as Daryl says, our administration is definitely engaged. And, I mean, we'll just move forward and continue to advocate for, for everything we can. Any last comments? Okay, anything else you guys want to discuss before the end of the meeting? Or was Park Lake it? Just wanted to remind you.
And I know Councilor Pudlo mentioned this already. Lots of users out at the, at Bike Park right now. And, you know, to, to really enhance the safety and the enjoyment, you know, we know we've got our kids out there and they want to jump and everything like that. What an excellent opportunity to get trained by a proper coach. Not only can they make the park more fun, but they can make it more safe as well.
Just to leave that, we are looking at today 12, 12 over. We are trying to get the option of 12 and under, that as well, at a later date.
Okay. It is on Facebook. There is a few spots left. It's just about full. So if you've got any interest, I really urge you getting on the phone or getting it all the time, getting, getting someone involved or you know, registered right away.
Okay, thank you. Okay, if there's nothing else, I guess we'll move to adjournment. Moved by Councilor Pudlo. Seconded by Councilor Pudlo. Be resolved that Council of Town Niboa now due adjourned is ready to meet at Council 8MCM. All in favor? Okay.